Good evening and welcome to the June 7th, 2022 meeting of the Pittsburgh City Council. I now call this meeting to order. Please be advised that FATV is conducting audio and video broadcasting, uh, recording of this meeting for public broadcast. And I ask that anyone in the audience who is recording this meeting to please stand and identify yourself for the record by name and address. Seeing none, I ask at this time that all electronic devices be placed into silent mode.
I better shut it off.
Um, Counselor Cruz, would you lead us in the salute to the flag?
Yes.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of the British Isles, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Counselor Cruz?
Here.
Counselor Deena Tally?
Here.
Counselor Fleming?
Counselor Green?
Here.
Counselor Schultz?
Here.
Counselor Squalia?
Present.
Counselor Ian Hasinger?
Here.
Counselor's, I'm sorry, President Zarella?
Here.
Counselor Boeschman?
Here.
Counselor Kature?
Here.
Counselor Corrigan?
Here.
Ten in attendance.
Thank you very much. Uh, the public had been advised to contact the Clerk's office regarding any comments of no more than two minutes. Uh, none have been brought to our attention. I would invite anyone in the audience wishing to speak to please approach the center table, identify yourself by name and address for the record, uh, and the item on the agenda on which you wish to speak, and then you may speak on that item for not more than two minutes.
Jacqueline Wetschi, Pittsburgh resident, speaking on agenda item number seven, specifically 154-22. As I stated at the council as a whole, uh, meeting earlier this evening, the health director is overpaid. Someone at the director level should possess people's skills which the current director lacks. For instance, at the December 2021 Board of Health meeting, a member of the public objected to the fact that he was talking to her about wiping her butt. She said this was rude and inappropriate. He admitted he said this, but instead of apologizing, he doubled down on his remarks. The entire exchange is captured on FATV video. I don't know if the executive session meetings you are holding pertain to his harassing behavior, but if that's not the case now, it certainly could be in the future. He is a liability to the city. If due to civil service regulations, there is no way to get rid of him, then you should cut or freeze his pay. If he doesn't like it, maybe he will leave. There are many qualified individuals with better people's skills who could take on this role. An example of this type of person is our epidemiologist, Dr. Victoria Seltzer. While I do not agree with her on everything, she is upbeat, helpful, energetic, professional, and polite. This is the type of health director we need and deserve.
Nonsense.
Mr. Mayor, let's...
Nonsense.
Mr. Mayor, let's leave it to the public. Uh, any further public comment?
Mine's just more of a question, um...
Can you identify yourself for the record?
Miranda Tozier-Robins. I live on Highland Ave, Pittsburgh. Um, I just have questions and comments regarding two ordinances, uh, 144-22 and 146-22. The question being related to $17,000 for gas and oil. Um, how long is the $17,000 intended to last before asking for more gas? And are gas receipts available for public viewing? Same questions for 146-22 related to the $25,000 for equipment repair, gas, and oil. Um, out of that, since it's not actually, um, split down, how much is for gas and how much is for repairs? And how long is this expected to last before the, um, next gas appropriation? And again, are receipts filed for public viewing?
All right, we will, uh, we do have the, uh, acting fire chief with us this evening. Uh, I will however ask that we wait until that comes up in the agenda order. And just to be clear for everyone, I didn't actually misspeak. He is currently acting fire chief in the absence of the interim fire chief. Uh, just wanted to be clear on that, but, um, so, yeah, we will, we will take that up when it comes up in the agenda order. Uh, and I'm sure we will get some good information on that. Uh, if there is no one else from the public wishing to speak at this time, uh, then we will move on to the report of the Appointments Committee. Counselor Kucher?
Thank you, Mr. President. The Appointments Committee, uh, met earlier this evening. Uh, we took up three new appointments. Two appointment, new appointments were special police officers for the Pittsburgh Police Department, Leroy M. Jackson and Dean D. Romano, both of which were approved unanimously. And, uh, the third is for the Pittsburgh Disability Commission, term to expire June 1st of 2025, Mr. Nicholas J. Carbone, but, and he was, uh, approved unanimously.
Move to accept the report of the committee?
Second.
I have a motion and second to accept the report. Um, if there is no objection, we will take this under unanimous consent. Seeing none, it is approved. Uh, Chief, if you would like to introduce your officers?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to take this opportunity to introduce Officer Leroy Jackson and Officer Dean Romano to the council. Officer Romano served the city of Pittsburgh for the past 31 years honorably, and Officer Jackson has put in 27 years to the city of Pittsburgh, serving our community as police officers. Earlier this evening, uh, the Appointments Committee confirmed their appointments as special police officers. I'm excited for them, sad to see them leave, but the work they've committed to the city over the last three decades is commendable, and I just wanted to point that out to the city council and the watching, the viewing public this evening, and I'm extremely grateful for what they've done for our city. Thank you.
As are we, Chief. Thank you, and thank you. Uh, and now, Madam Clerk, if you would swear in our new special police officers. Counselors, as usual for swearing in, uh, I would ask that at least the center of the bench be cleared. Am I in the center? Oh, excuse me. Counselor Cruz?
Thank you, Mr. President. The records appear to be in order.
Take a motion to accept. I have a motion and a second to accept the report of the Committee on Records. On the motion, Counselor Boeschman?
On the motion, I just want to make sure it states that I voted against 154 and 1...
The record accurately reflects your votes.
Okay, that's all I want to make sure.
Uh, if there is no objection, we'll take this under unanimous consent. Seeing none, it is approved. Uh, communications from His Honor, the Mayor. Uh, one appointment letter for a permanent full-time firefighter, Jacob G. Moran, and a reappointment letter, is it a rea-, uh, well, an appointment letter for Mary Jo Bohart, Director of Economic Development, to the Monmouthsut Regional Commission for FY 2023 on behalf of the city of Pittsburgh. This is an annual appointment, and I do, uh, just want to note for the council and the public, this is not an appointment to her city role. This is an appointment to the Monmouthsut Commission. Uh, both of those will be referred to the Appointments Committee. Uh, we have a communication from the Pension Reserves Investment Management Board. If there is no objection, we will waive the reading and place it on file with the city clerk. No objection. Uh, annual report, uh, from the independent auditor, uh, for the year ended June 30th, 2021, that is already available on the city's website. Again, if there is no objection, we will simply place that, or while it is on file. And then we have the, actually, we have two requests for suspension, uh, that I would like to take out of order if there is no objection. Um, the first is 17022, uh, at the request of Director Curry. If council is willing, I'd like to entertain a motion for suspension on that item.
Motion to suspend. Second?
I have a motion and second to suspend the rules on 17022. Uh, that requires a two-thirds vote. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Counselor Cruz?
Yes.
Counselor Deena Tally?
Yes.
Counselor Fleming?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Squalia?
Aye.
Counselor Ian Hasinger?
Yes.
President Zarella?
Yes.
Counselor Boeschman?
Yes.
Counselor Kature?
Yes.
Counselor Corrigan?
Yes.
That's all in favor, ten.
All right, that is unanimous. Uh, the matter is before the council. Director Curry, would you like to introduce the order?
Good evening, councilors, and, um, thank you for the positive vote for, uh, suspension of the rules. Uh, Councilor, this, um, a brief history, uh, this is, this grant is how the, uh, Monmouthsut Public Health Networks first started back in 2009. Uh, this grant is very similar to that with the intention of hoping to expand, um, upon what we've already done in the last 12 years, and that looks like, um, expanding staffing. It also looks like expanding the network, uh, which means more communities to be involved, and that's basically the Massachusetts Department of Public Health's goal with the whole grant. However, um, we did this, or I did this application for a grant back in the beginning of, or almost the end of FY 20, beginning of FY 21. Um, the grant was supposed to come out, uh, shortly thereafter. Um, we have a budget, we have, uh, signed contracts. However, I didn't see the money until about two weeks ago, and it, it actually, the only thing I really have done in compliance with the grant is attend all the meetings. Um, many deadlines have passed, including hiring staff. I was not going to hire staff until I saw money. My other concern with this grant is, um, I'm now hearing that these funds in FY 22 need to be spent by June 30th. Um, and now they are slowly changing, um, the, the expenditures that are approved. So now they have asked me to scramble and put together a budget that they will approve for the expenditures of $300,000. I don't know about you, councilors, but I'm not in a position to start scrambling to spend $300, and quite frankly, it's nearly impossible in a municipality. However, in the interest of, uh, not losing the 300 grand, I would like to be able to put that, uh, or continue on with the grant with hopes that it, uh, continues to be level funding, uh, level funded in FY 23. As you can see, I only did one year because, quite frankly, I'm not sure that the funds are really there, and they're saying that there will be level funding, but there's just too many question marks with this grant. So I'm playing it safe, um, and I would hope to, uh, earn councilor's trust of, to move forward with the grant expenditures. Uh, I can certainly come back and re, uh, restate what that budget is, but I would like to commit to the original budget with hopes that there would be an extension to the $300,000 that's currently being issued, and then whatever the funds are in FY 23, I'll come back for that approval.
All right, thank you.
Just trying to make sense out of, uh, a messy situation, more or less.
Yeah, I, I do not envy the position you've been put in, and, uh, I'm sorry you're stuck in that. Uh, Counselor Green?
Um, my question for you is, um, you're not in the position to hire additional staff with that money right now before June 30th?
I, I am, I could be in a position to do that. There are funds, uh, from, uh, previous years, communities do put in, it's, so it's in a revolving fund. Um, and I think that's what the state is looking for. They know that there is a, uh, that the possibility is there. It's, I'm just not comfortable with it. I'm not going to do that, and I'm sure I will present that to the communities tomorrow morning in our meeting, and I'm sure they won't be comfortable with it either, so...
Okay, but you, you want to have the earmark so that if and when you are ready to hire staff, it's from this grant money?
That's correct. So if the state does grant an extension on FY 22 funds, I want to be in a position to move forward.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Counselor Squalia?
Thank you, Director Curry. The Monmouthsut Public Health Network grant, uh, $300,000, uh, to expand on shared services between municipalities. So we need to spend this by June 30th, supposedly? Is that correct?
These are the, the 300, it's supposed to be 300 annually.
Annually?
Yes, but I haven't seen much of commitment for FY 23, so I did not put it in here with the intention of coming back before the council to approve FY 23 if, whatever those funds are.
Right, 'cause, 'cause in our, in our budget, we have, uh, what, 70,000?
Yeah, you have a regional sanitary inspector, um, and that grant would cover, um, that regional sanitary inspector.
The regional sanitary inspector is within the Monmouthsut Public Health Network grant?
Correct.
The, the, hopefully yearly. Uh, is, is this funding, uh, the source of also our street homeless outreach?
No, this, this is completely something totally different.
Is this a funding source that could be used to expand our outreach or, uh, housing availability?
If the Monmouthsut Public Health Network communities wish to apply that to that, and I would apply to DPH to make that an expenditure, then yes. Um, not all the communities involved in the MPHN have a homeless problem, so I, I doubt that that would be a passing, uh, vote, but it, I wouldn't say no, it's a possibility. I'm just guessing.
Could you just provide to the public an example of what, uh, an expenditure might look like for this, uh, funds by June 30th, or, or hopefully an extension?
Yeah, I believe that the, um, the state is looking at, um, purchasing, or for us to purchase, uh, COVID testing kits. Um, I, I, they're also, Governor Baker is also giving us about $7,000 in the next couple of weeks, so that's not something I'm interested in. If the other towns are, I can certainly make that an expenditure. Um, I don't think that they'll be open to that type of, uh, ex, large expenditure. They probably, maybe a couple of thousand dollars here and there, but, um, this grant is basically staffing, and to get away from it for the last three weeks of FY 22 makes really no sense to me. I'm not going to throw $300,000 away. I would rather give it back than try to hustle and spend it.
Largely staffing expenditures.
That's what it is, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Further questions or comments from councilors? Counselor Cruz?
Thank you, Mr. President. Director Curry, uh, something that's going to come before us is eventually is using the legislative building for a testing site and then approving funds for cleaning. Uh, could the funds be used for the, that cleaning of the legislative building after the site, or is it...
So this, the, these funds aren't actually for that, uh, purpose. Uh, that, that is a completely different grant as well. Uh, but you mentioned the, uh, uh, possibility of a test site here. Uh, I was actually proposing to pay for that cleaning through the opera funds that the department received back in the beginning of the year.
Right. I was just hoping that we could use this instead of the opera funds, but apparently not.
Yeah, I mean, again, if the, uh, towns voted that that was an approved expenditure, um, this is a regionalization project, so every town has a vote on what the expenditure is. So why would 12 towns vote to support cleaning Pittsburgh's legislative building? I'm not saying it's no, but it makes no sense.
I guess my thought process would be that they would have their own test sites and agree that we could all use some of the money.
Right, and if that's, if that is a possibility, then, then that certainly is a, would be an approved expenditure, yes.
Thank you. You go to the floor.
Thank you. Further questions? All right, matters before the council.
Move to approve petition 17022. Second?
I have a motion and second to approve. Uh, if there is no objection, we'll take this by unanimous consent. Seeing none, it is approved. Uh, we have a further request for suspension on 18922. Uh, ordered that, uh, this is, this is a new one, ordered that the mayor, authorizing the mayor to execute a lease with Select Energy Development as outlined in the enclosed order, uh, with Long Show Middle School. Um, if you'd like to come on up and introduce this, Matt, well, actually first, I'm sorry, I have to first ask if the council is willing to entertain a motion for suspension.
So moved.
Second?
I have a motion and second for suspension. Madam Clerk?
Counselor Cruz?
Yes.
Counselor Deena Tally?
Yes.
Counselor Green?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Squalia?
Aye.
Counselor Ian Hasinger?
Yes.
President Zarella?
Yes.
Counselor Boeschman?
Yes.
Counselor Kature?
Yes.
Counselor Corrigan?
Yes.
That's 10 yet.
All right, it is unanimous. Go ahead, tell us what you're looking for.
Good evening, Council President, council members. I appreciate your willingness to take this out of order and suspend rules this evening. Uh, Craig Schalafu, Director of Finance and Operations for the School Department, this is Byron Woodman from Select Energy. We're here, um, to authorize or ask for your permission to authorize a lease and a purchase, power purchase agreement for the Long Show Middle School solar project. This will be our third project for the school department. We currently have one at Memorial, at Ryan Gold Elementary School, looking for one now at, um, Long Show Middle School, and there will also be coming to you in the not-so-distant future for one for solar canopies at Pittsburgh High School. Uh, this is a 20-year lease agreement. It will save approximately, um, return $17,000 in year one and about approximately a half a million dollars over the course of the 20-year lease.
Questions from councilors. Counselor Boeschman?
How come we not, how come we don't buy them, not lease them? They say you get your money back within six years of time.
So the, the, my name is Byron Woodman, and I'm with Select Energy. I've been working on, on this project and solar power purchase agreements and direct purchases throughout the, the Commonwealth. Uh, the, the federal tax benefits for the solar are really what helps bring down the, the payback period on that. So as a, as a public entity, um, you would not be able to, to benefit from the, the payback period or, or the, the tax credit. Um, so looking at comparable projects without any, you know, uh, tax credit, the payback period is, could be as long as 15 years, um, and it's a considerable investment upfront. So typically, um, municipalities and cities are looking at, uh, uh, public-private partnerships in which we're able to monetize the federal tax credits and provide year-one savings.
Now, my question, does your rate go up every year?
No.
No, it stays the same?
For 20 years, it's fixed, yep.
So it'll be fixed, or if it's 13 cents a kilowatt hour, that's what it is?
Uh, yep, yeah, it's actually, uh, 12 cents, and, uh, in the, in the utility territory here, uh, you're north of 17 cents is a comparable rate. So right out of the gates, um, it's a significant savings, um, on a per-kilowatt-hour basis.
Now, are you also going to put batteries in it for these, for the schools? No batteries?
So this is not a resiliency project. Um, just in terms of the sheer economics and, and the functioning of that building, it definitely made more sense to stay with solar only.
All right, okay. I yield the floor.
Thank you. Counselor Corrigan?
Um, delightful to see Mr. Schalafu here. Very nice to meet you. I remember when we, um, did the solar projects at Ryan Gold, um, and Memorial, so I'm thrilled to hear about Long Show. Could you give us and the community a sense of the timeline of installation and when this will be, when, when we'll be on the grid with these, with these devices?
Yeah, that's a great question. Thank you. Um, we've been working on this project for a while. So we've already received Unitil's permission, um, and the Interconnection Service Agreement, which is great. We've received the incentives, which is excellent. We've gotten the engineering done and finalized the site design, so all those big steps in the development process are already done at this point. It would be, um, we've already procured, uh, probably almost all the material for this because we buy in bulk. So as soon as, um, we receive, uh, permission and the, the documents are signed, um, we're ready to start working directly with, um, the operations team directly for that school, and we'll put together a, a, a plan. I'm anticipating most of the construction, the actual physical construction of the, um, of the installation would happen, um, between midsummer and probably mid to late autumn. Then there's the interconnection process where Unitil comes out and, and, um, provides their certificates and things like that, too, but it would be a 2022 project is, as we're anticipating.
Thank you. That's, that's very exciting news. I yield the floor.
Thank you. Uh, Vice President Vin Hasanga?
Thank you, Mr. President. So you mentioned that it would extend into the school year. Would it be possible to safely conduct the construction during, uh, school operation?
Yep, absolutely. We, we work with, um, well, as you can imagine, in Massachusetts, many of the best solar sites for municipalities are in schools, so we are very comfortable. We're working with, um, the onsite, uh, school, uh, team. There's a couple pieces of it that we will need to coordinate with, uh, in terms of loading from the street and getting the panels up onto the roof, but those are very isolated times. Uh, most of the, the work done is the electrical work that is not, uh, invasive. It would be electricians running the wires and doing that kind of thing. So, yes, we would definitely be scheduling around with the school as the priority.
Great. Um, and how is, um, the end of lease term and removal of the equipment handled?
So at the end of the term, um, it's anticipated that there are three options. One, the, it could be extended. I mean, the panels, it's a 20-year agreement, the, the panels are expected to be producing well, um, past year 25 or 30. Um, part of that would have to do with the condition of the roof and the use of the building at that time. Um, so one option would be extending the agreement, the other one would be us removing the, the system at our cost. Um, and then the third option is, um, for the city to actually buy the system directly at that point after the tax credits have been monetized, um, from the financing model. And there, there's three options actually throughout the term that, that the city could potentially buy the system. Not that you need to, but it would be an option if you wanted to.
Okay. And I know we just replaced the roof on Long Show last year. Um, just to double-check, it's, the life of the, the roof is expected to be over 20 years?
It is. It's a 50-year guarantee on the roof at this time.
Great. And how is the surmangement going at the, the other projects, Memorial and Ryan Gold, which it's already happened? Is everything gone smoothly?
It, yeah, everything has worked well, um, at Memorial, Ryan Gold, we're, you know, enthusiastic about getting two more on board.
And have the projected savings, uh, come, come to fruit?
Yes, it has. For the other two projects, absolutely. And again, this will be approximately a half a million dollars over the 20-year span.
So I think this is a great opportunity. It's a, it's a big roof that faces south, might as well put some solar panels on it. Thank you very much.
It's exciting. Thank you.
Counselor Squalia?
Thank you. Um, so like Counselor Vin Hasanga said, we replaced the roof three to four years ago, uh, and I know at that time we had discussed potential for solar panels. Did we, did we, um, uh, improve the structure of the roof, or has the roof structure been analyzed such that we can add the additional load for the, the panels without adding significant cost to the city?
Yeah, so there's, there's actually, um, four different sections of the building. I was just counting them up there, but there are multiple sections of the building. The one to the north are flat, and, um, and then the part that was re-roofed was the shingled portion along the top. And so we've decided to only use the shingled portion on the top, and by good coincidence or good fate, the, that, that shingled portion matches to almost 100% of the building's overall energy usage. So it's going to be about 94% powered by solar, um, just using the, the newer portion of the roof. So it's perfect.
The existing flat roof is an older roof and requires some repair?
It's, it's an older, it's a, it, parts of it are older. It is a flat roof. It's slightly shaded by the southern piece of the building, um, and from, just as a system design, we thought it would be better to stay on the newer section. We had, we had the flat roofs evaluated, and they're about halfway through their lifespan, so we decided that it wasn't a good option to, unless we had replaced the flat roofs before putting those panels on, which we didn't choose to do at this time. In, in terms of the agreement, I did, I did want to note, and forgive me if you're already familiar with this from previous projects, but there's the power purchase agreement, which is the sale of the energy at a set price for the 20-year term. Then there's the lease agreement, which essentially enables us to access and monitor the equipment and, and maintain it over the term. And then there's a notice of lease which is filed, um, that essentially just puts on record that the, the lease is, is there, so, um, so those are the three documents that would be signed. Um, and this is made possible through the Power Options Program, which is a consortium which, um, Pittsburgh is, is part of. And this is made possible through the Power Options Program, which is a consortium which Fitchburg is, is part of. And Select Energy, the company I work for, is the solar provider through that program.
And just to confirm the, the question on the structure of the roof, being able to support, the, the existing structure as is, being able to support the solar panel?
Yes, and we did have a structural engineer go out. We gave her the, the solar design, the weight loading. She went through the entire building and certified that it, it does support easily the, the solar system.
Fantastic, thank you.
Thank you.
Before I go to Counselor Green, one quick question. Less for you guys and more for, I guess, the mayor. This order, I, I don't have the actual packet open in front of me, but given that we just heard about the three documents, are all three documents encompassed within this?
No, the power purchasing is not something that we need the council approval to make a purchase.
Okay, excellent. Just wanted to make sure we had all the documents that we needed.
The lease was something that needs to be approved.
All right, excellent. All right, Counselor Green.
Thank you. And Mr. Woodman, thank you for your commitment to this community and these ongoing projects. Have we looked ahead to the Crocker School building as the next, perhaps maybe the next big project that Select would take on as a solar project?
We have, and, and the design of the Crocker School will be solar-ready, and then we will call Byron and his team to take on the next phase.
Okay. And then in the, the course of the 20-year lease, does your company provide, if a, a better or a more improved panel comes out, do you switch out the, the older panels with the newer panels? Or, you know, I mean, because solar is ever-evolving, and thank God for that technology and doing that. But what, what is the agreement if in six years, all of a sudden, you know, there's a aha moment and solar gets re-energized? Or we find a way to put mirrors on it to double the impact of the, the solar? Very familiar with solar. So what, how does your company handle that? Any upgrades?
No, that's, that's, that's a great question. So, so the, the economics for a project are based on just whatever the available tech, the best available technology at, at the time. So even when we looked at this like 18 months ago, we had visibility to the panels that were out at the market at that time with slightly lower production. And by the time we made it through the development period, we were able to actually increase the capacity, which is what you're speaking to. The, the economics for the 20-year power purchase agreement and lease are based on, again, the, the existing technology. If there was a game-changing technology that came out in year 12, we would be in, in a position to optimize that. But again, it would be within the structure of the building, the structure of the project, the weight-loading calculations, and the approval of the city. So that's really what we would be doing, and presumably if, if that did happen, it would be in the best interest of the system owner, us, and, and the city as well. But typically, what we've seen is once the financing is approved for a project, and once the system is installed, we just, we, we let it run.
I would hate to miss an opportunity, though, that if we could capitalize on even more savings, because that's what we're looking for. I mean, any, anything that we can do as a savings, we're all about, but, and I just don't want to miss an opportunity if new technology comes along that we wouldn't be afforded the opportunity to say, yes, we can afford to do that.
Well, absolutely, and, and I think one of the, one of the examples for that, not to get distracted from, from Long Joe, but, but at the high school, we're looking at doing a, a canopy project there, and been speaking with the school committee, and it looks like that that is, is starting its way down the development piece. But there could be potentially a battery as part of that, and so that's an emerging technology that we're evaluating for there. Maybe yes, maybe no, but, but it's more likely that we'd be introducing, you know, newer technologies for the upcoming projects. And again, we, it's possible, but who knows what technology will bring, so.
Where is your service department located?
Hopkinton.
Okay.
Yeah, we're, we're local to Massachusetts, been building here for over a decade. The team is local. We've done over 500 projects. Over 100 of those with municipalities, so.
Excellent. This is a great partnership, so thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Boerschman.
You have to excuse me, I'm kind of hard of hearing, but did I hear Mr. Schalafu write that since you're getting all the business from the city of Fitchburg, that you're going to put on a new roof when we build the Crocker, Crocker School, so we can put your panels on there to help us out with the roof? Is that true? I thought I heard that.
Counselor.
I missed, I missed the first, I also have a hearing deficit, so I missed the first part of your question, but.
I thought Mr. Schalafu said you were going to put the roof on for us at the school, and so you could put the panels up there.
No, but the, the roof is beautiful. We have seen CAD files for it. We have, there's a wide-open area for solar. We've, we've been in touch with the architects, and it, it will be a beautiful solar-ready site.
Sure you're not going to throw us that bone, they call it? All right, I yield the floor.
Thank you, Counselor. It is, it's not nice to taunt the, the very nice vendors that we work with. Counselor Squalia, second time.
Thank you. Due diligence question. I'm looking at a map of Unitil's substation capacity. And there's a lot of areas, particularly at the Fitchburg High School area, that has zero megavolt amp capability within the, the substation power system. I, I can't zoom in to see the newest of Long Joe, 2019, looked like there was some capacity. Are we sure that there is capacity to tap into Unitil's system?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely, and, and definitely for Long Joe. We've, we've gone through that. We have the capacity reserved for this project. And the interconnection application is signed, so, yes. The other schools, to your point, it's, it's important to be able to file the paperwork with Unitil as quickly as we possible, as those are getting more saturated. But based on our preliminary review, we think the high school is, you know, in Crocker is viable.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you. Further questions or comments from councilors? All right, I'd like to entertain a motion.
Approved, 18922.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and second. If there is no objection, we'll take this under unanimous consent. Seeing none, it is approved. And that concludes our suspensions, I believe. Thank you both. We next have the report of the Legislative Affairs Committee. Before I begin, however, I'd like to also ask consent of council to take our ordinances out of order so that Mr. Skrowski can speak to us once on all those and then get home to his family, rather than waiting until the tail end of the meeting to.
Which are the ordinances, please?
The ordinances at the end of the agenda. Those are items, let me see, I'm sorry.
Last page? Page nine.
13522, 13622, and then 19022 through 19322. These are all items that we would be taking up in full session tonight anyway. I'd just like consent to take them up immediately following Legislative Affairs, rather than at the end of the agenda. Any objections? Counselor Green?
Would we also be taking out of order the recessed hearings and the public hearings from Unitil, so they don't have to sit here through the whole budget?
I would be amenable to that as well. I haven't received a request for that, but it would make perfect sense. It probably does make sense to leave our budget follow-up to after we get the, our guests home to their dinners. So any objection to any of that? All right, so this is going to be a very mixed-up agenda this evening, but we'll get to everything. Okay, Legislative Affairs Committee, we had two items. We met on May 31st, took up two items. One was Tom Skrowski, Executive Director of Community Development and Planning, and Amy LeBlanc, Senior Project Manager, to make a series of amendments to Chapter 169 of the city code, as well as road closure changes for the two-way conversion project on Main Street. And then we also, well, actually, I'll, I'll let Tom tell us about that one first briefly. It was approved unanimously by the committee. Would you like to just briefly give the rest of the council an overview? You don't have to go into all the detail unless they want it, but.
Of course, thank you, and also appreciate the sentiments and moving everything else up. I know I'm not the only person here with a family. I have a feeling that my, my boss might have requested that because I've got a two-week-old at home, in which case, thank you, Mayor. And, you know, I appreciate, you know, everybody's attention to the matter, and normally wouldn't ask for anything special like that, but appreciate it.
No, no, newborn infants rank way above talking to fusty old councilors, so.
Well, I appreciate it, everyone. So at the matter at hand, 13922, this is a series of ordinance changes related to the things we need to do to make the two-way Maine and Boulder conversion effective. It's a host of changes outlined in the memo and the Excel document, which has a legend, which is keyed in on, on the map that you all also received, that outlines each and every change and where geographically it's going to take place. These relate to parking prohibitions, time limit, time-limited parking, the removal of parking meters, that functional conversion of roads from one-way to two-way, prohibited left turns, prohibited right turns on red, stop and yield signs, required right and left turns, and then ultimately, street closures on Depot Court and cushion. So, the Legislative Affairs Committee unanimously adopted all of these recommendations, and ultimately, we're going to kind of take a two-pronged approach here. At least, that's what we're recommending. In the first track, we have 1693 in the city code allows the city council to authorize 90-day experimental regulations. And we would ask for the city council to authorize that set of regulations effective June 23rd, 2022, which is the, the date at which the two-way conversion will commence. And then in tandem, Solicitor Pusitari and I will be working on submitting the formal ordinance changes to the council that will go through their readings, just like any other change. So if we go to an effective June 23rd, 90-day experimental regulations, that will give us until the second council meeting in September to finalize the changes. I think we'll have everything into its final readings before that, but it's good to have that cushion. And ultimately, good to use that 90-day period to also work on examining how the laws are working, what tweaks we might need to make as we're working our way towards the final ordinance change. This document was created by our engineering consultants at Time Bond, but was heavily vetted by Fitchburg Police, Fitchburg DPW, and the Community Development and Planning Department over an almost 18-month design process. So it's been pretty, pretty heavily reviewed by our subject matter experts, both within and, and within the city and amongst our consultants. So I'd be happy to take any questions you might have, and then can talk you through the process if you'd like to talk about that as well.
Before I forget, I would like to, before I go to questions, I'd like to entertain a motion to amend the petition to reflect the, I'm sorry, did you say the 22nd or 23rd?
23rd.
23rd, the June 23rd start date, because the, the current one says June 30th completion.
Move to amend.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to amend accordingly. If there is no objection, we'll take this by unanimous consent. It is so amended. Okay, any questions on this item? And I know normally, we don't take committee items individually, but because this is a slightly more complex issue. Counselor Squalia.
So just to clarify, we're, we are, we are, we're able to make these changes on a temporary basis quickly, and then when it, when the project is finally complete, we can amend those as we see a need, and we have, we can make these changes permanent.
That's correct. So both for Fitchburg Police Department's enforcement and for the city's liability, it's important when the conversion takes place to have the ordinance reflect the reality on the ground. And I think this is a good way to both have that be the case, but also give us that timeframe where we can tweak things as needed.
And with the, all these changes for the two-way Maine conversion, I've had a number of concerns from constituents on, I hope that one day, it's not just all of a sudden, it's two-way Maine, and there's a sign that says you can't go two ways. How are we ensuring that we're adequately relaying to the public that the road is changing and it's not two-way like it's been since 1960?
So we're going to do two different things. If the council were to authorize the June 23rd date today, tomorrow, my office would start working on a press strategy. You know, getting a press release out to all the relevant news outlets, getting email blasts out, working on social media, strategizing, and FATV and all our media sources. And then on the day of and leading into it, and I think that's why the chief's here, there's going to be a really intensive strategy with the Fitchburg Police Department as well.
So I've already tasked Sergeant Boudreau to work hand-in-hand with Nick Erickson, our DPW. We're going to put together a plan on what the rollout's going to look, look like, at what time we're going to roll it out, what time we're going to flip the switch on, what time that's going to happen, where you're going to have bidirectional traffic. We're going to be putting out additional resources, personnel, to monitor the flow of traffic on Main Street, most likely on both ends of Main Street, and then concentrate on the middle of Main Street. I'm not so concerned with the high-traffic count time. I'm more concerned with the low-traffic count time, where someone that's been historically driving in the left lane, I just don't want them arbitrarily going to the left lane when, when there's not a lot of cars on Main Street. So for the first good week of this transformation to both Maine and Boulder, I'm going to put additional resources out there, working with Tom's group on bringing out police details to make sure that we're monitoring the flow of traffic. You know, we're expecting concerns when it comes to loading and unloading. You know, companies that have been unloading for the last 10 decades, oh, two, two decades on one side of the street. Now they're going to have to adjust the way they do things. So both Sergeant Boudreau and Nick and Gary Witherington, they're going to work out a plan. We're, we're going to rely on, on the markings that we're going to put on the street, the signage, and we're also going to put up additional conage. One thought we had was to put cones right down the center of Main Street, so it's definable. These orange cones, left and right side, and the traffic's going like that. So I can assure the council, for that, that first week, we will have additional resources out there, monitoring the flow and really trying to make a safe environment as we make this transition.
And I would urge the city, when, when you're preparing to make that switch, to share that information with the city council, and also share with us guidelines for what we should share with people when they ask questions, such as, how do I, how do I load for my business, you know, what, you know, other particular questions that constituents might ask, so that we're all able to share our, with our networks, the correct information and timely information, so that everybody is aware.
And the, the press release we put out, and the email blasts and all that will include frequently asked questions. And I'm trying to think of some other creative ways in the next two weeks to get the word out there as well, including just functionally, what do you do at the western intersection if you're looking to go eastbound on Main Street? People haven't done this for a really long time, and of course, vice versa. When you're coming off the Water Street Bridge, you're now going to be able to actually loop around to go westbound, should you choose. And, and, you know, if you're going westbound, leading into Depot Square, you can make some different change movements that you haven't been able to make before. So I think we've got to highlight those and make them clear to the driver, but also the pedestrians too. They got to look both ways now. That's important. Simple fact, but important.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. President, I also want to mention to the viewing public, if they have questions, contact the mayor's office. That's probably the first place to start. Thank you.
And before I go to Counselor Green, I'd also just like to note, because I know some people are possibly listening to this in the background while they're doing something else at home, and when you do that, it's possible to have certain phrases pop out and not the surrounding context. So I want to reassure the public, when the chief is talking about putting cones down the middle of the road, that is not in lieu of permanent striping. This is not, you know, the stone planters or whatever. This is as an aid to people learning the new traffic pattern. Correct?
Correct. We, we have to change 40 years of learned behavior on both Boulder and Maine. And when you're dealing with the general public in transportation, visuals help. That's why striping the lines, signage, and temporary cones down the middle of Main Street to add that extra level of visualization, I think is important. Like I said, I, I am really deferring to the experts, Sergeant Boudreau, Nick, Gary Witherington, you know, the people that really know the traffic, to make sure that we.
Like I said, I am really deferring to the experts, Sergeant Boudreaux, Nick, Gary Withington, you know, the people that really know the traffic, to make sure that we provide as much guidance as possible as we make this transformation.
Excellent, thank you. And I know, knowing those experts, we won't go wrong. Counselor Green.
My question is, start and end point. So are we starting reconfiguring at Morin Square up to River Street? Or are we doing Water Street Bridge down Main Street to the Boulder? Where's the landmark on what we take on during this first phase of changing traffic patterns?
Right. So, one thing I would direct you all, and, you know, anyone who has questions, to go to the City of Pittsburgh's website. I think there's a webpage for the downtown Pittsburgh transformation, and there's some simplified drawings that kind of show what the bounds of work are. But to answer your question briefly, it's just a little bit past Day Street and Main. At that intersection there, all the way to roughly Central Street, is the scope of work that we're talking about here. So the Upper Common will remain one-way, Morin Square will remain Morin Square. It's really about, once you enter into, sort of, inner downtown, if you will.
And how quickly, realistically, could we see the actual solid yellow lines on the road, or the left-turn arrow into those now designated turn lanes?
So, all of the, we will not switch over on June 23 until all the pavement markings are in place and all the signage is in place. So, you know, what this will likely look like, and we've been working with the police and Department of Public Works, is in the middle of the night, leading into the 23rd, is when the line painting would take place. The signage would already be up, and it's just a matter of, you know, activating the signage, and all of the traffic signals are operational, it's just a matter of kind of flipping the switch, so to speak.
The striping is probably the most important aspect of this transformation, because with clear, decisive striping in the ground, it's easier for someone not from Pittsburgh to understand which way they're going. So, nothing will transpire until that striping is down on the ground, and then we're ready to make the flip on the, on the transfer.
Okay, and I just have one specific question about the street on the, for the bowling alley.
Putnam.
Okay, so if I am, if I'm traveling down Main Street, and I want, I've been able to take a left on Putnam, am I still going to be able to take a left on Putnam, or am I going to have to wait for traffic? Am I going to back up traffic trying to make a left on Putnam?
So you're driving north up Main Street?
Correct.
And taking a left on Putnam?
Yes.
That's still an approved turn?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Just need to be able to get home. Thank you. Thank you, I'm all set.
Counselor Brochman.
Well, the chief asked, I was going to ask that question about cones, because I saw the barrows as I was coming down on the road, I thought that was a great idea. But I do have a question for Tom. Now, did I hear you correctly? On the design of downtown, because I'm a pro advocate of downtown two-way Main Street, very much, was there, who, who gave the most input? Who, was there any professional people that talked about how we should design downtown Pittsburgh, making it two-way? Besides saying, we hired this company, didn't anybody go to this company and say, well, what do you think? Do you think this is a good move, or should we do it something else?
Right, so, it really starting, if you watch, and by the way, it's under, on the Pittsburgh's website, the Services tab, and then its Main Boulder Project, there's also a video on that page, which is why I mentioned it. And I kind of talk about city planners, folks in the business community, over the last almost 30 years, have been talking and making recommendations about converting Main Street to two-way traffic, starting with our Vision 2020 Master Plan, our Urban Renewal Plan, both our original one and our updated amended plan as of this year. The Smart Growth American Next Steps Memo, we had professionals from Washington DC come in, do an audit of our downtown, that was one of their chief recommendations to make. It's a pretty well-established, sort of, urban planning 101 maxim, that converting streets to two-way traffic is good for business, it's good for cars, it's good for people. And then ultimately, the professionals that made the decision at the end of the day, Community Development and Planning, DPW, with the guidance of Time Bond. And, you know, certainly, the Police Department, the mayor's office, as a whole, as a city, we made this decision with professional experts guiding us.
Oh, the only reason, I'm not trying to find fault everybody, so just hear me out, I'm only asking questions. My concern is, I saw some plans going way back into the 70s, maybe 70s, early 80s, they had a downtown study.
Counselor, our vote this evening is just on the ordinance changes to facilitate the Main Street conversion. We've already debated and voted on the existence of the Main Street conversion.
All right, go ahead, never mind that. I'll ask them after.
Yeah, definitely, definitely. Valid questions, just not in the scope of our agenda tonight. All right, Counselor Cregan.
Thanks, I just wanted to speak to the clarity of communication that has been put forward as part of the process, and that if the viewing public hears, can just type the words, downtown Pittsburgh transformation zone, we see the whole timeline, and the thoughtfulness, and also the many agencies that were involved. And I think I'm going to yield the floor, because all I wanted to say is, hallelujah, thank you all for a very complicated piece. And there's also a very simplified map for people with specific questions about streets, parking, and the rest of it. So downtown Pittsburgh transformation zone on your Google, you'll get right to the Pittsburgh, Massachusetts site, and see the whole process unfold.
Thank you. And, yeah, I'd like to note, this has been a long time coming. I remember back when we were first debating the one-lane, two-lane, it was, I believe, my first year in council, and I remember specifically make, either making a motion or asking for the motion to include an instruction to make deliberate progress towards two-way Main Street. And I've been very pleased with what I've seen. This has been a large undertaking, it's finally coming online, and this is one of the last pieces of it. So, let's get it done, and I can't wait to see how it affects the downtown. I have Counselor Squalia for the second time.
I remembered two questions. One, we're changing Putnam Street back to two-way in this proposal.
Correct.
So people, we're going back?
Yes.
And regarding the bus stops that are located on the plans, is it correct, there's only two designated bus stops at Blossom Street, and all the way at the very eastern end of the project, and the very western end of the project? And if that's the case, is it, can people flag a stop for the bus along Main Street and stop?
The bulk, correct.
Are they allowed to stop on Main Street?
The bulk of the area is a flagging zone, the way I understand it. And we brought this to the attention of Mart when we were originally putting things together, and that was sort of their general feedback, was this is a flagging zone, for the most part.
So if people are on the bus and they need to get to the senior center, for example, they flag and they can get off there?
Correct.
Excellent, okay, thank you.
Further questions or comments?
Move to approve the Legislative Affairs Committee report?
Second. I'm sorry, we haven't actually read off 09222. I'm not sure we need a full discussion on it, but just for, for the sake of the record and the public, 9222 is Chief Martineau, Pittsburgh Police Department, to add to Chapter 40 relative to the Police Department with respect to civilian traffic control specialists. This was unanimously approved by the committee as well. This will allow the Police Department more flexibility in assigning people to direct traffic at, for this, for construction sites, et cetera. Chief, if you want to add anything?
Sure, very briefly. The reason I brought this to the Legislative Committee is it needed to go in the form of ordinance change under Chapter 40, because I'm bringing in another work entity into, under the Police Department's head, known as Traffic Control Specialists. These are civilians that will be granted the authority, under my authority, to direct the flow of traffic within the City of Pittsburgh, where we have an abundance of extra pay details every day in the city. And because of the changes in police reform, many, many cities and towns are no longer doing what we still do, we're swearing in our retired officers. There's an abundance of police officers that are no longer sworn police officers, who have been contacting cities and towns, looking for that opportunity to work as civilian traffic control. Lemonster has been doing it for the last year, very successfully utilizing former law enforcement officers to continue working as traffic control specialists. That was the reason I brought it to this body, and there was another caveat that I was trying to collaborate with Pittsburgh State University. Pittsburgh State has a very robust criminal justice training program, and I thought, what a great way to incorporate the student body up at Pittsburgh State, wanting to be police officers, to try to attract them to my department. So there was, there was a couple different reasons why I wanted to bring this forward, and, and like you said, Mr. President, unanimously was approved by the legislative. I'd be happy to take any questions as it relates to this new position within the city.
And I'll just note, as I did at Legislative Affairs, I love the fact that we're thinking about this, that the chief is thinking about this in a very holistic, comprehensive way. It's not just, you know, how do we fill these shifts? It's, how can we fill these shifts and make it work in a way that secures the future of the department as well? Counselor Green.
Could I apply for this position and get a badge and a ticket book?
No.
For 10 years, I've tried. Thank you.
Nice try. Counsel Schultz.
I really like the idea, Chief, of having the interns from Pittsburgh State get some experience, and maybe, as you said previously, hang on to them and keep them, keep them in the city.
There's a lot of talent at Pittsburgh State, we're so fortunate to have this program right in our backyard, and anything that I can do to try to collaborate and hold on to that talent is worthwhile, and I thought this program was a significant step in that direction.
Yeah, I applaud you for that.
Thank you.
Move to approve ordinance 139 and 9222.
Second. So these are not in, are these in ordinance form already? I forgot to check, to be honest.
So, the, the Main Boulder would be converted into an ordinance after tonight, but again, I guess I would ask, I don't know how the form of vote would look like, but if the council could enact their authority under 169-3 to implement the experimental regulations effective June 23.
Excellent.
And mine would have to run the normal ordinance form, where the multiple readings.
Right, that's what I figured, okay. So let's take this separately. First, I'd like to entertain a motion to receive the report of the Legislative Affairs Committee, just as a formality.
So moved.
If there is no objection, we'll take this under unanimous consent. There being none, the report is received and filed, not acted upon. 13922, I would like to entertain a motion to, could you give me that site again, please?
169-3.
169-3, to enact the authority of the council under 169-3, to implement a 90-day experimental ordinance change, to begin on June 23.
So moved. Second.
I have a motion and a second. And Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Counselor Cruz. Counselor Deanna Tally.
Yes.
Counselor Green.
Yes.
Counselor Schultz.
Yes.
Counselor Squalia.
Aye.
Counselor Ian Hasinger.
Yes.
President Zarella.
Yes.
Counselor Boachman.
Yep, yes.
Counselor Kuchu.
Yes.
Sorry, your tickle. Counselor Cregan.
Yes.
That is unanimous.
Excellent. Motion passes. And then, 19222, this is just to approve the petition.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the petition and send it to be drafted as an ordinance. If there is no objection, we'll take this under unanimous consent. Seeing none, it is approved. We are now going to move on, as previously discussed, to the ordinances on the second-to-last page of the agenda, beginning with 13522, which is in its final reading. 135 and 136, they're paired. Would you care to present?
I don't believe that one's me, although.
Oh, yeah, that one's not you.
I think I get paid under that one, that's the only connection there, so.
This, this is the wages and salaries, correct? Just to double-check, I don't have, like I said, I don't have the packet open in front of me. This is the table and the matrix. If there is no objection, I would like to vote these simultaneously. And I have a motion on both of them.
A motion to send 135 and 13622 to their final reading?
Thank you. I have a motion and a second to pass 135 and 13622 through their final reading. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Counselor Cruz.
Yes.
Counselor Deanna Tally.
Yes.
Counselor Green.
Yes.
Counselor Schultz.
Yes.
Counselor Squalia.
Aye.
Counselor Ian Hasinger.
Yes.
President Zarella.
Yes.
Counselor Boachman.
Yes.
Counselor Kucher.
Yes.
Counselor Cregan.
Yes.
A unanimous 10.
Thank you very much. Next, we have 19022 in its first reading. Mr. Skarowski.
Sure. This is the vacant property ordinance, and it reflects all the changes that were agreed to upon deliberation by the council. I don't know if you have any particular questions about that.
No, not at all, just wanted to give you the opportunity if there was anything you needed to add.
I'm sorry, I missed, I couldn't hear very well, what was, can you repeat that, please?
It's the vacant property registration ordinance, so, you know, it's previously with the Board of Health, and now it's, it's being adopted as an ordinance within the city code, and, you know, created a fine structure for how long a property's been vacant, and both fines for residential and commercial properties, just kind of in a nutshell.
Counselor Squalia, go ahead.
Yes, can, can you give a rundown of how this was adjusted since the petition form?
Sure.
So, Counselor, in the interest of time, I'll just note that all those changes were discussed extensively at the committee meeting. There were quite a few, and they're all relatively small in nature. I'm not sure it's really a great use of our time to run down all of them right now.
I won't be voting for it if I don't hear a response to my question. Thank you.
Because there were a number of minor changes, as you had indicated, Mr. President, I'd be happy to try to submit a comparison document, could work with Director Skarowski, so that we could identify those clearly. And I would just also indicate, if the councils are interested in voting it, knowing that they can look to amend at any point in time during the reading, including the last reading, sir.
Yes, that, that is correct. I'll just restate, in case anyone didn't hear, this is a first reading vote. If there are concerns about things that we don't have in front of us right now, that counselors think they might want to tweak, that is possible at our next vote on this, if that should eventuate. Counselor Squalia, you still have the floor.
Okay, so we can, if I pass this through its first reading, we can expect a comparison document as to the original petition, and on the second reading, we can discuss further.
If there's anything that jumps out at you, yes, definitely. That's what I'm understanding. Solicitor?
I'd also enjoy the opportunity to make sure that we captured all those changes, too.
Yes, excellent. Counselor Brochman?
Yeah, I just want to make sure, this has nothing to do with 40U, right?
This is not the 40U ordinance.
Okay, that's what I make sure. All right. You'll give us that information? Because I don't know, I don't know who remembers. All right, all right.
All right. So, Counselor Cregan?
Just a reminder to my colleagues that you can find this information on page 113 in our packet, and I think it goes to page 121, so you can, you can review it.
Thank you. All right, do I have a motion?
Take a motion to send 19022 to its first reading?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to pass 19022 through its first reading. I have a motion and second to pass 190-22 through its first reading. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Counselor Cruz.
Yes.
Counselor Deanna Tally.
Yes.
Counselor Green.
Yes.
Counselor Schultz.
Yes.
Counselor Squawyer.
Aye.
Thank you. Counselor Ian Hesinger.
Yes.
President Zerella.
Yes.
Counselor Boeschman.
Aye.
Counselor Kachur.
Yes.
Counselor Craigin.
Yes.
That is 10 unanimous.
Thank you very much. 191-22, amending section 181.2112, Business Districts, inserting the following paragraph entitled Downtown Business as outlined in the enclosed ordinance. Just a brief overview?
Sure, so I think-
Sentence or two, that's fine.
Yeah, the statement about revising business districts is a bit of a misnomer because, of course, it's a broader set of changes. That was one of 10, I think, that were made throughout. So what was submitted to you was only the changes in ordinance form, as Solicitor Prestary put together, as well as a map document that accompanied it that included the new in-town business district and included the property on School Street that is now, instead of being cut in half, is solely within the downtown business district. So it included just the map changes, just the ordinance changes, anything that was added, subtracted, et cetera. Similarly, with this one and 40U, we could include a track changes version in the next grouping of changes going into the council, if that's helpful.
All right, and yes, all these changes were also, I believe, unanimous. I don't have my notes in front of me.
During our packet.
But yes. So, any questions from councilors on this subject besides the potential for a future track changes version between the first and final readings? All right, can I get a motion?
Motion to send 191-22 to its first reading.
Second.
I have a motion and second to pass 191-22 through its first reading. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Counselor Cruz.
Yes.
Counselor Deanna Tally.
Yes.
Counselor Green.
Yes.
Counselor Schultz.
Yes.
Counselor Squawyer.
Aye.
Counselor Ian Hesinger.
Yes.
President Zerella.
Yes.
Counselor Boeschman.
Yep.
Counselor Kachur.
Yes.
Counselor Craigin.
Yes.
That's unanimous with 10.
Thank you very much. Next, we have 192-22, amending chapter 139 of the Pittsburgh City Code for noncriminal disposition of violations in municipal fine procedures. This is the 40U ordinance.
Correct.
Yes. And just, I'll give a brief summary, and if Tom wants to add anything, he certainly can. This is just going to update the way that we enforce fines. This isn't adding new fines or creating new things that people can be fined for. This is simply updating our enforcement procedure to make it easier to actually collect on fines by creating a municipal hearing officer who will hear appeals of the fines in-house, as it were. They are still appealable to courts after that point. Anything to add? I see you both. Anything to add?
One item briefly. So that is true, it's no new fines, although within 40U, the city council has the ability to choose what falls under the umbrella of 40U and what does not. And that's, you know, in Appendix A, that's the schedule of fines, so ultimately, you can take items off of that list if you feel it's appropriate. You can't just sort of arbitrarily add things. These are sort of the things that are within the universe of what can fall under 40U, but you could remove things if you'd like.
Counselor Squawyer.
Thank you. Tom, when we had discussed the 40U, there were a number of questions that we had that we were expecting to be answered when it came before us in ordinance form, such as who, you know, there was questions such as who the municipal hearing officer would be, if it's someone in-house, if we're hiring a new person. Do you have any answers to those questions that we brought up at the committee meeting?
So the municipal hearing officer question itself, that would be a position that would go in front of the council subsequent to this vote. So the municipal hearing officer would have to be designated by the council through a separate ordinance change. So that's not set in stone here yet, but I'd be happy to answer any other specific questions.
So it could be an additional role on an existing employee, or it could be an entirely new employee. This is something yet to be decided.
It could be one or the other, correct? This is creating the enabling environment for us to have that conversation.
Solicitor Prestary, it looks like you had something to add.
No comment at this time.
Okay. All set, Counselor?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Boeschman?
Yeah, I thought, I thought he was going to come back in front of the council and explain it to us, because when we all left here, we weren't, we couldn't find no information whatsoever on the 40U, only for what he said. And I think Counselor Deanna Tally on the other end had a lot of say on it. He wasn't sure how he was going to vote, I remember, and I said, okay, then I'll wait. And I told you about me calling up the different communities and talked about it, and some of the communities that I talked to didn't know anything about it.
So I don't know, I mean, councilors are always free to do research in other communities on their own time, but as far as what 40U actually constitutes and what we're voting on, I think we've been given a pretty complete picture of it. Are there specific questions you'd still like addressed?
No, because I was waiting, I thought he was going to come back and explain more detail to the council, and that's why I just let him sit on the sideline, because I got, you know, I was going to bring some stuff in, but they didn't bring it with me.
What details do you feel were missing?
Well, I didn't bring it with me. I just got done telling you, and they didn't bring it with me.
Well, again, I would just note then that that would be something that presumably you could take to the community development office between first and final reading and get the information that you feel is needed.
And certainly, I was requested to do a document review within the Department of Other Communities that have done this, and what their experiences were like in North Central. And while we did come back after that first meeting to, you know, inform the council that there aren't many communities within North Central that have adopted 40U, at least that we could tell, but many communities like ours, you know, gateway cities throughout the Commonwealth have adopted it, and we are recommended to do so by many of our peers just through information sharing and through our work with the Harvard Innovation Field Lab, among other groups. It's, I think the tricky thing about 40U is if you, and I know you did this, and others, I'm sure, gave a call to a municipal employee and asked, how is 40U working within their community? You know, it's like, it is in some communities where it's been adopted, it's not, people don't think about it as 40U, it's just part of what they do. We just adopted a component of a state regulation that allows for a more flexible process. You might talk to them about how is the municipal hearing officer working in their community, and they could tell you all about that, but 40U is kind of a niche thing that the average city hall employee might just not be aware of.
Yeah, that's very common. I can confirm that a lot of the time, people who work directly with either laws generally or certain specific laws, as Mr. Skarowski is familiar with, become very familiar with referring to those laws in technical terms, but the people who only encounter them on an implementation level usually just know them as, well, we've got a law that says this. They don't, you know, they can't cite it, they can just say, this, we've got a thing in our city that does this thing, and so that's pretty common. That's, I would agree that you would probably get a better response from some of these communities if you asked about their fine enforcement process or their municipal hearing officer. I'm just, they probably have no, they're probably thinking, 40U, that's some technical thing, I don't know what it is, you know? I didn't even, I didn't know what it was until Tom mentioned it to me, and I went and looked it up, so. Further questions, comments from council? All right, can I have a motion?
Motion to send 192, 192-22 to its first reading.
Second.
I have a motion and second to pass 192-22 through its first reading. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Counselor Cruz.
Yes.
Counselor Deanna Tally.
No.
Counselor Green.
Yes.
Counselor Schultz.
Yes.
Counselor Squawyer.
Aye.
Counselor Ian Hesinger.
Yes.
President Zerella.
Yes.
Counselor Boeschman.
No.
Counselor Kachur.
No.
Counselor Craigin.
Yes.
That passes. We, did we need a two-thirds on that? I don't think so, right?
Not sure.
Not that I'm aware of. I'd have to-
Yeah, this isn't a zoning.
Not a zoning issue, so.
All right, so that passes. That passes seven to three. And lastly, for the ordinances, we have 193-22, updating the downtown Smart Growth District pursuant to the attached map. Not really sure there's much else to say about that. We saw, we all saw the map. We all know what it reflects. Obviously, if anyone does have any questions, feel free, but otherwise, I'd like to entertain a motion.
Motion to send 193-22 to its first reading.
Second.
I have a motion and second to pass 193-22 through its first reading. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Counselor Cruz.
Yes.
Counselor Deanna Tally.
Yes.
Counselor Green.
Yes.
Yes.
Counselor Squawyer.
Aye.
Counselor Ian Hesinger.
Yes.
President Zerella.
Yes.
Counselor Boeschman.
Yes.
Counselor Kachur.
Yes.
And Counselor Craigin.
Yes.
Unanimous.
Thank you very much. I also received requests from councilors to also take the hearings out of order for much the same reason. If there is no objection, we'll begin our hearings. All right. First up, we have 137-22, Unitil, to petition for a new number 4A pole on Pritchard Street, approximately 453 feet north of Elm Street and approximately 190 feet south of Oliver Street, as outlined in the enclosed petition. This hearing was recessed, and I now declare it back in session. If you'd like to present to us.
Good evening, councilors. Mark Frappier, I'm with Unitil. I'm the supervisor of electric operations. The reason for the petition for the new pole is we were approached by the property owner at 70 Pritchard Street. He's looking to remove a dead tree from the front of his yard, and the utilities have a guide wires attached from the neighboring pole number four at the intersection of Pritchard and Adams. So the guide wires are supporting that pole number four to his tree. So we're requesting that we set a new pole along the roadway to support that existing pole four. So we're calling this New Pole 4A, and we'll have a guide wire attached to the existing pole four, just to support that existing pole, and we can remove the guide wires from his tree, and he can continue with his, with his project of removing the tree and improving his grounds.
All right, thank you. Do we have any questions or comments from councilors? Counselor Green?
I just want to make sure that, so Unitil or any municipality is no longer using trees as supports for wires and guide wires?
That is no longer a practice.
Okay.
Yeah, so what we're doing is, you know, as they come up, we're correcting, making actions to correct.
All right.
You know, typically, it's, you know, it's the same side of road, it's just a guy, an anchor in the ground, removing the tree guy. In this situation where you have an intersecting street in a corner, it creates, you know, the attachment needs to go somewhere, and the pole's the ideal location at the backside of the curb.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate that.
Thank you. Further questions, comments from councilors? All right, I'm going to open this up to the public. Is there anyone here wishing to speak in favor of this petition? Seeing none, any in opposition? Seeing none, if all have been heard, I declare the hearing closed. And the matter is before the council.
To approve 137-22.
Second.
I have a motion and second. I will note for the record that we are temporarily down two councilors for this vote, but a quorum is still present. Madam Clerk, would you please, actually, I'm sorry, we do, do we need a roll call for this? I don't think we do. If there is no objection, we'll take this under unanimous consent.
For the record, why don't we take a roll call, because we're missing councilors?
Sure, I am amenable to that, in that case. Madam Clerk, actually, Counselor, would you be amenable to a voice vote?
Yes.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None in opposition. Passes unanimously, eight to zero. All right, next up, we have, thank you very much, sir. Next up, we have 166 through 168-22. All three of these are from Comcast to request a grant of location for the purpose of installing a new conduit for Comcast service. One is for Sawyer Passway, one is for 180 Main Street, and the other simply says, on Main Street. I believe we have a Comcast representative with us remotely, and I now declare the hearing FATV, are they with us?
Yes.
Oh, they're coming in. Oh, excellent. Mr. Fluehling, you are currently muted, but you may introduce yourself to the council and introduce your petition. We can do this one at a time or all three at once, depending on how you feel is most appropriate due to the details.
Good evening, Dave Fluehling, Comcast, Nine Phillips Road, Reuben, Massachusetts. I would like to speak in favor of the three Comcast petitions, the first one being Sawyer Passway, the second one to provide service to 180 Main Street, and the third one is to install conduit on the remainder of Main Street. We have an opportunity to bring, install conduit to these addresses, and we're looking forward to starting the project if approved.
Counselor Green?
Will this conduit be able to provide Wi-Fi services to all those areas?
Yes.
Thank you.
And Counselor Schultz?
Why is 180 Main Street singled out and just, you've got the rest of Main Street, but 180, is 180 Main Street going to be done first?
No. The reason we broke it out is because it was such a large project, it was kind of hard to lump it all into, onto one petition, so we kind of broke it out kind of by street, and it was a little bit of a separation on Main Street up where 180 is, so we just kind of broke it out, make it easier. But it is all the same project.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, and I would like to just ask, how, if at all, will this impact the street and particularly the Main Street conversion project? Will you be trenching for this?
Yes, we'll be excavating, installing new conduit, correct.
So this, and have you consulted with the city hall to make sure that this is done before the paving of the new Main Street configuration is completed?
Yes, my understanding is that the paving is off a little bit. I don't know exactly what time, you know, the timing is on the paving, but again, once this, you know, if this is approved, we plan on starting the work right away prior to any paving.
Okay, excellent. Just wanted to make sure we didn't wind up with a new road being dug up, or with new pavement, I mean, being dug up. Counselor Squawyer?
So we're providing new conduit for service on Main Street, and as Counselor Green asked, will this be able to provide Wi-Fi? And the answer is yes, but unlike, Unitil provides us with very clear maps, but we don't have very clear maps here from Unitil, just kind of descriptions and lengths. And so can you please verbalize to us exactly the, exactly the start and finish of the conduit that will be running up Main Street to provide, you know, high-speed internet services to our Main Street buildings?
Sure. Do you want me to do it, break it out per petition? Would that be helpful?
Just the entire encompassing project would be helpful, all three petitions.
Okay, so this would be the one to provide service to 180 Main Street. So we would be starting the installation on Snow Street, starting at utility pole NT, which stands for No Tag, excavating across Main Street to place two-three, two-three-inch PVC conduits, 113 feet plus or minus, to a proposed two-by-three vault located in the concrete sidewalk. From newly placed vault, excavating to place one-two-inch conduit, five feet plus or minus to the property line of number 180 Main Street. After coming out of that vault and the sidewalk, the five feet, everything after that would be on private property.
And then the rest of Main Street, the 168-22?
So the other one on Main Street would be, we would be starting the conduit installation on Myrtle Ave at Main Street, starting at existing utility pole 426/1, excavating to place two-three-inch PVC conduits, 860 feet plus or minus on Main Street, and three two-by-three vaults located in the concrete sidewalks to provide Comcast service to the businesses located on Main Street.
So really, this goes in tandem with 180 Main Street? This provides the service to the 180, and then this connects to the 180? Is that correct?
It does not connect to 180, because there's a break in the, in the businesses there that we're servicing. So it would basically, that one, Myrtle Ave and Main Street, would go basically up to the Dunkin' Donuts, and then the 180 would be fed off of the existing utility pole on the other side of the CBS.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Kucher.
Thank you. There's a portion of Main Street that has absolutely no service whatsoever. That's more towards the west end of Main Street, right on the border of Ward Three. Is this going to fix that problem?
I'm not familiar with that end of Main Street. Is that further north up on Main Street?
Is it north? Yeah.
Yes, it would be north, yeah.
Yes.
Sorry, I had to get my bearings, but yes, it would be.
So I can, if you, I'm not real, again, I'm not real familiar with that, but my understanding is that this project would just be down to 180 and then down to Myrtle Street. So anything further north on that, that would be something that we would have to take another look at to see if we already provide service or if we're going to be providing service to those areas.
I've had a constituent call me, he's a college student, and he does not, he's not provided Wi-Fi service in his apartment in that area, as Comcast is over across the street, but not, not in his building.
Do you, do you have an actual address that I could take that as a takeaway, and I could start, I could address it and get back to you?
The actual address escapes me right now, but I can get your contact information from, from the city clerk, and we can talk about that after.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you. I do have one additional question. Under the Pittsburgh City Code, Section 8912, there is a requirement that any underground conduit will include an additional duct of at least three inches in diameter reserved for city use? Is that included in the plans here?
It absolutely is, yes.
Excellent, just double checking. All right, any further questions or comments from councillors? Oh, Mr. Solicitor?
Would the direction be for the gentleman to report that new conduit to the planning department or the DPW, so that we have an engineering on that?
Can we get that done, sir?
I'm sorry, I missed the question.
Can we get the, the new conduits reported to the planning department and DPW, just so that they can do whatever, do whatever it is that they need to do with the information?
Yes, it's actually on our plans. It's incorporated into the plans that there'd be a shadow conduit for the city.
Excellent. Thank you very much. All right, can I get a motion on, all three? We can do all three of these if there, oh, I'm sorry, thank you councillor, thank you. I'll open this up to the public. Is there anyone here who would like to speak in favor of any of these three petitions? Seeing none, anyone in opposition to any of these three petitions? If all have been heard, I declare the hearing closed. Matters before the council.
Move to accept 166 through 168-22.
Second.
I have a motion and second, and we will take this also by voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None in opposition. Passes unanimously, ten to one, ah, ten to nothing. All right, now returning to our regularly scheduled program, we have the report of the council as a whole committee. We met earlier this evening and took up the mayor's operating, fiscal year 2023 operating budget in its entirety, as well as several supplemental appropriation orders necessary to implement that budget. Those were all approved by the committee, most unanimously, not all. I believe all the supplemental orders were approved unanimously, and the budget order itself was approved by a vote of eight to two.
Move to approve the supplemental orders 155 through 163-22.
Councillor, we actually, we can't meaningfully approve the supplemental orders without the principal budget?
Move to accept the committee of the report, the report of the committee as a whole without taking action.
Do I have a second for that?
Second.
I have a motion and second to receive the report of the committee with no action. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the report is accepted. The matters are before the council.
Move to approve 155-22 through 166, 163-22.
So councillor, what I was saying was not that we couldn't do those separately because they were in the report, but that we couldn't do those separately because they can't be implemented without the budget itself.
Move to approve 154-22.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and second to approve 154-22. On the motion?
On the motion.
Councillor Boeschman.
It's going to state that 162, I wasn't in favor of, right?
It's going, it will state all of, all of your votes accurately.
Just checking, girls and boys, that's all.
So this is just for 154?
Anyone further on the motion? All right, madam clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councillor Cruz.
Yes.
Councillor Dean Atalley.
Yes.
Councillor Green.
Yes.
Councillor Shultz.
Yes.
Councillor Squallia.
Nay.
Councillor Van Hazinga.
Yes.
President Zerella.
Yes.
Councillor Boeschman.
No.
Councillor Kucher.
Yes.
Councillor Craigin.
Yes.
Okay, that's eight to two.
Move to approve 155-22 through 163, 155-22 through 161-22 and 163-22. So everything excluding 162-22.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and second on those orders. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councillor Cruz.
Yes.
Councillor Dean Atalley.
Yes.
Councillor Green.
Yes.
Councillor Shultz.
Yes.
Councillor Squallia.
Aye.
Councillor Van Hazinga.
Yes.
President Zerella.
Yes.
Councillor Boeschman.
Yes.
Councillor Kucher.
Yes.
Councillor Craigin.
Yes.
Okay, ten unanimous.
Move to approve 162-22.
Second.
I have a motion and second to approve 162-22. Speaking on the motion, madam clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councillor Cruz.
Yes.
Councillor Dean Atalley.
Yes.
Councillor Fleming, is there some, sorry, councillor Green?
Yes.
Councillor Shultz.
Yes.
Councillor Squallia.
Aye.
Councillor Van Hazinga.
Yes.
President Zerella.
Yes.
Councillor Boeschman.
No.
Councillor Kucher.
Yes.
Councillor Craigin.
Yes.
That is a nine to one.
Thank you very much. That concludes the council as a whole, report of the finance committee. Councillor Dean Atalley.
Thank you, Mr. Finance Met, sorry, finance met last Wednesday, May 25th, and it's, it's a lengthy list. I'm not going to, I'm not going to go through them all unless someone has a specific question.
Councillor Squallia.
Just per the constituent request in the public...
I was going to get to that, but thank you.
Considering we have the police chief and the acting fire chief, if we could have those questions answered.
There was a question regarding the expenditure, yes, of gas and oil, if either of you would care to address that?
I had made a specific request to transfer $17,000 to gasoline, and I believe, it's not in front of me, but I believe the other one was $25,000 to automotive?
Yes.
Uh, yes.
Was that the question to constituent?
Yeah, the fire department was $25,000 for equipment repair, gas and oil, and yours was $17,000 for gas and oil.
Exactly. So the $17,000, one only has to go to the pumps to figure out where our estimates have been this past year. We keep very precise records on gasoline expenditures, and we know exactly how many gallons a year that we purchase. And when I'm presenting a budget to the city council, we take our best faith estimate on what we think the projection costs are going to be per gallon. Well, obviously, we were way off this year between $3 and $5 a gallon, and that $17,000 will cover me for the rest of this fiscal year. We have two more payments that are due on our gasoline account, and then we start fresh in July. So, but we do keep detailed records on the amount of gallons we purchase each and every year, and those can go through the public records request channel if so needed. Same thing with automotive repair. We've experienced an abundance of increases this past year in automotive repair, whether it was tires, brakes, front ends, parts just went up significantly this past year. And once again, we try our hardest to give a good faith estimate when I'm presenting a budget to the mayor, but this was just one of those unpredictable years on trying to guesstimate on what parts and services were going to cost. And that request, once again, will get me through this fiscal year, which was approved by the finance committee that evening, both of which, in reference to the constituent's question, is achievable through public records requests. Captain Lemay handles all public records requests from my department. We will, if something comes in, we will look at it and determine if it's a viable public request, and we would provide the documents.
Thank you, and just to confirm, so, or rather, just to restate and make sure that it's accurate, these are backfilling expenses that you have already incurred this year? This is not to fund going forward into next fiscal year?
These are to balance the books this year, where we discovered a shortfall on both those items, gasoline. In fact, I've come in front of this body twice this year on gasoline, just because of where it's gone just from January. So I've been back in front of this body twice. And like I said, I've tried to make my best faith estimates on gasoline. It's pretty consistent what we use in gallons per year. What's not consistent is the price.
Right, under, perfectly understandable. I just wanted to ask, because the constituent had specifically asked, how long do you expect this to last?
Those two items will pay the bills for the Pittsburgh Police Department between now and July 1st. And keep in mind, we're always one month behind, so the $17,000 is not one month, that's a couple of months, and same thing on the automotive repair.
Thank you, and would you confirm that that's essentially the same for the fire department?
Yeah, there's just a few extra notes for us. We've had ninety incidents in the last three months, which, if anybody knows these trucks, when they're running, we have to pump them, they're using much more fuel. We use diesel as opposed to gasoline. Diesel prices has increased about 80% from last fiscal year to this fiscal year, more so than the regular gasoline prices. It's over $6 a gallon now, for instance. So the $25,000, I also believe you did have a question about which this was specifically going to, because there's multiple things here in that line item. It is specifically for the fuel costs.
Okay, so that was a question, and then like, if it's $1,000 for fuel, it's in on the...
It's specifically all $25,000 is for fuel costs. So basically, our call volume is also up about 8.4% this year to the same time last year. So it's kind of a triple-headed monster for us when it comes to that, as to why we're dealing with these problems. But I echo Chief Martin's sentiments on that.
Thank you very much. I knew you two in particular would always have the numbers ready to hand. All right, does that address your concern?
That's fine, thank you.
Thank you. Further questions from councillors regarding the finance committee report?
Just that I appreciate very much you allowing the answering of these questions.
Certainly.
Move to accept the finance.
Oh, I'm sorry, Auditor Brooks?
I'm just pointing out that the two loan orders require a vote called.
Yes, so can I please entertain a vote that, a motion that excludes 152 and 153-22?
So moved.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and second to approve the report of the finance committee excluding 152 and 153-22. If there is no objection, we'll take this under unanimous consent. Seeing none, it is approved. 152-22, we need a first reading roll call vote. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and second to pass the loan order through its first reading. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councillor Cruz.
Yes.
Councillor Dean Atalley.
Yes.
Councillor Green.
Yes.
Councillor Shultz.
Yes.
Councillor Squallia.
Aye.
Councillor Van Hazinga.
Yes.
President Zerella.
Yes.
Councillor Boeschman.
Yes.
Councillor Kucher.
Yes.
Councillor Craigin.
Yes.
Thank you, that's ten unanimous.
Thank you, and 153-22, same deal.
So moved.
Thank you. I have a motion and second to send, to pass 153-22 through its first reading. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councillor Cruz.
Yes.
Councillor Dean Atalley.
Yes.
Councillor Green.
Yes.
Councillor Shultz.
Yes.
Councillor Squallia.
Aye.
Councillor Van Hazinga.
Yes.
President Zerella.
Yes.
Councillor Boeschman.
Yes.
Councillor Kucher.
Yes.
Councillor Craigin.
Yes.
And that is ten unanimous.
All right, we have a report from the planning board recommending that the petition of Basema Almusa, trustee and owner of 339 River Street, to amend zoning ordinance 181.643 to include the following uses, marijuana courier and marijuana delivery operator, to allow same in the commercial district, as outlined in the enclosed petition, that will go to Legislative Affairs. The report of the Public Works Committee councillor Fleming was unable to be with us this evening. Councillor Schultz, I know she usually asks you to fill in when she's not available. Do you have the results of the votes?
Yeah, we were provided with the minutes of the meeting, and I believe most of these petitions were adopted, except the old one there, 08920, was, was held. I can give you a quick rundown, councillor Zerella.
Sure, just whatever you have is good. I know you're kind of on the spot here. Councillor Fleming was planning on being here, but ran into some difficulties.
Yeah, 027-22 was, was held. That was a street light on telephone pole, but I believe the commissioner is looking into an alternative to try to provide some type of lighting, either increase the strength of the bulb or to find some other way to find some lighting for that area. The petition 093-22 was, was a, I guess we're looking at a traffic study for that, but it was, that also was held. 108-22, we had some participation on the 32 trees, and we're also, we had an amendment that they're going to try to trim the trees and also fix the sidewalk as well. So that Gary Wellington was here, and that's what he, he gave us for information.
Point of clarification, the amendment was not to fix the sidewalk. The amendment was just to raise the tree canopy and trim.
Right, you're correct.
The sidewalk will have to come later.
Yeah, but he did say that that would be upcoming. And then the 140-22 was, was approved. No parking from here to the corner on the corner of Charles and Forest. 165-22 was also amended and was approved with the amendment. I won't go into detail on that unless councillor Squallia needs it.
We amended to remove the rectangular rapid flashing beacon and remove the need for a traffic study.
and remove the need for a traffic study and approve the no right turn on red.
No, no turn on red, yeah.
Uh, from water to Bemis and Bemis to water.
Okay, and then the last one, the last one was, uh, 08920, and that was, uh, that's an old petition that was, uh, is also was, uh, held until a traffic study is done, and that's, uh, that's the report.
Thank you very much. Matters before the council.
Make a motion to accept.
Second.
I have multiple motions and multiple seconds to accept. Uh, if there is no objection, we'll take this by unanimous consent. Seeing none, it is approved. Uh, we have several orders going to Finance. If there is no objection, we'll waive the reading of those orders at this time. Seeing no objection, uh, we have 188 22 ordered that where, with permission, I'll skip the whereas clauses, uh, this is approving, uh, non-medical manufacturing facility for, uh, cannabis at 339 River Street. And this will be referred to Legislative Affairs. We already took up the lease and the ordinances and the script, the thing. And last, we have 109 21. Uh, this is, again, I mentioned it last time, I believe. This is my fault that this has been held over for so long. Uh, but this should be referred to Council as a whole committee on the 15th, to discuss the salary of the mayor and counselors. Madam Clerk?
And to clarify, it's Wednesday, the 15th.
Yes. Counselor Schultz?
I want comment, should that, the, the city clerk, should the new city clerk be inserted? Can that be done, uh?
Well, this is, because this is a petition from 2021, it reflects who submitted it at the time.
Yeah, should it be amended to, to reflect a new?
It can, certainly.
I think it should be, I, I really do.
I would agree that it should be amended.
Sure, absolutely.
Move to amend to include Joanna Simeon and strike Mary De Aldera.
Thank you. I have a motion and second. Uh, if there is no objection, we'll amend this by unanimous consent. Seeing no objection, it is amended. Um, and again, this, uh, I would request that counselors submit all recommendations that they intend to raise, uh, to the city clerk no later than this Friday, um, end of day. And those will be taken up at the scheduled meeting. I will note, uh, just a personal note, that while I can't claim that I planned this, I wish I could, I do think that it actually makes more sense to discuss these salary changes in the first year of a term rather than the second year, because then there is less implication that the decision's being made on the basis of who is or isn't running or who is likely to be elected. But that, I, again, I can't say I planned that, it just worked out that way, um, due to my own delay. Uh, I can only plead new father, um, but regardless, if there is no objection, this will stand referred to Council as a whole committee, uh, on the 15th. All right, seeing no objection, I have a few announcements. Final weekend for Scenes from Shakespeare with the Thurston Consort playing Elizabethan-era music at Gateway Park, 19 Sheldon Street, on Saturday, June 11th at 1:30 and 3:30 PM. This is a comedy based on the work of William Shakespeare, presented by Stratton Players, Wordplay, Swordplay, and the Play Within a Play from Midsummer Night's Dream. Pay what you can, reservations not required. Also, please visit Moore &amp; Square Diner, who are offering a special treat. If your party spends $20, you will receive five free raffle tickets. Uh, visit strattonplayers.com for more. Uh, Taco's Tequilas is having an anniversary party on June 30th, starting at 6:30 PM. And for those who don't know, that's right down at the intersection, uh, just off the bridge. And the British American Club is having a chicken barbecue on Sunday, June 12th, serving from 1 PM until sold out. Tickets are $15.
Move to adjourn.
Oh, tickets are available at the club. I have a motion to adjourn. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and second, if there is no objection, we are adjourned.